Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the December 9th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And first, if you have pagers or cellphones or other electronic devices, we would ask that you either turn those off or silence them now for us. If you are not the applicant and you're here to address us on a case, there are sign-up sheets outside on the table in front of the council chambers. If you'd fill that out and indicate the case number, we'd be happy to hear you. And with that, we'll go to approval of the November 18th minutes. Move approval. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. And Jim Allen's light doesn't come on.
I abstain. I was not present.
Okay, very good. Minutes are approved. We'll go to continuance requests.
We have two uncontested requests for continuance. Items 15 and 28, which is PUD 1426, request to defer until January the 13th. Item 28, PV 075, request to continue until March the 10th, 2011.
Is there anyone here today who came to talk to us on either of those items, on the agenda 15 or 28?
Mr. Chairman, on item 15, if we could, I would like to continue that to the meeting after the 13th. I know we had requested, and that's why Russell said the 13th, but there's been some things come up. If we could have it at the meeting right after the 13th.
That would be the 27th of January?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, item 15, we'll continue to January 27th instead of 13th. Motion?
I move approval of the contingency items as modified on 15.
Gave a motion, second to approve the continuance. Cast your votes, and they're approved.
There's one new request for continuance, which is item 27, C 62, 52, request to defer until January the 13th.
Again, the same question. Is there anyone who came today to talk to us on item 27?
Maybe we continue item 26.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that motion, but I do have a comment on this. I don't know why it's being continued, but it has some 10 final plat with 10 technical evaluations. Hopefully, in the continuance period, they'll be able to resolve some of those TEs.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve continuation of item 27. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, I'm Eric Groves. I'm an attorney, and I'm hired to represent the Settlers Ridge homeowners. There are three cases on the docket today. 23, 24, and 25 are their numbers. The first is a PUD, the second is a plat vacation, and the third is a new plat. I'm going to ask the commission to continue this until the second meeting in January for several reasons. First, I've just been engaged. Secondly, we need time to prepare our case and perhaps even discuss this situation with the developer, should that opportunity arise. Right now, the neighborhood surrounding this area is opposed to it, but we do need -- it's three different cases. There's about half a dozen PUDs involved. This PUD is a substitute for an earlier PUD, which is a substitute for a PUD before that, so we need time to untangle this, make a presentation.
Okay, we'll hear from Mr. Hagan, who's standing right behind you.
For the record, Phil Hagan with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant in this case. I have met with the homeowners once already. Our item is at the end of the agenda. I'd be happy to meet with them between now and when our item comes up to discuss. This is pretty straightforward, rezoning, and I'd like an opportunity to talk with them and see if we can't get this issue resolved and heard today. If we can't, at that point, we agree to a continuance.
Commissioners?
I guess we could renew their continuance request, as it came up in order at number 23. We don't have to necessarily act on it right this minute. Does that sound reasonable? Eric?
I guess my suggestion is if you and perhaps Mr. Hagan could have a conversation, and then, as we come up to 23, if you're unable to resolve your dispute...
Well, Commissioner, it would take a great deal more time than I have this afternoon or possibly Mr. Hagan has to resolve. It's too complicated. I mean, there's nothing that we could work out in a hallway consultation.
Fair comment.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? And Phil, would you agree to the continuance?
Well, I have met with these homeowners for an hour and a half, and I don't -- I left that meeting with very few issues unresolved that can be -- that really appropriate to be discussed concerning the zoning. I don't know what else we could talk about between -- that can't be discussed in the next probably two hours.
Well, now, apparently, Mr. Groves just stood up to speak, but apparently, after your meeting, the homeowners went out and engaged legal counsel, so apparently, there's something to talk about.
I'd like the opportunity to talk to them between now and then. If we can't, then we'd agree to a continuance.
There was a meeting before I was engaged, and all I can do is repeat what my clients told me, which is they came away from that meeting with absolutely no understanding whatsoever of what this project's going to look like. You know, they talked about zoning, and said, "What's it going to look like?", a question that this commission asks on many occasions. No answer. If I have a continuance here and some time to work it out, maybe I can get that question answered. I mean, we're talking about row homes in a suburban development here. There's something to argue about, all right, so we sure would appreciate it. Second meeting in January, if you will. Did you say second meeting in January? That the 29th is what you want? Is that right?
27th.
27th? The 27th? You need that much time?
Yes, because we have the first holidays between now and then.
I mean, I'm going to be out of town for the holidays. Some of you may be, too. I don't know. So, I mean, we won't real -- I mean, my associate could work on it while I'm gone, but still, you know, there isn't that much time.
I mean, to be fair to my client, I think we have met with him, met with fire marshal, met with the developer of the additions next to us, 30 of the property owners, and to hire an attorney at the last minute and then put us off for, you know, 30 days, when I think we could talk about a lot of this out there. Some of the answers, questions that they want answered, they're not going to get an answer to. I mean, they're asking stuff about exactly how specific house plans, that sort of thing, that they're not going to get an answer to. There's not an answer to it.
Well, that's -- well, we're not going to get an answer to her questions, and I think if I have enough time, maybe I can persuade this man to give me answers to those questions. But what they're going to look like, what this development is going to look like is critical. It's a PUD. It's a PUD. Everything is on the table. Everything is open to negotiation. That includes -- I mean, they want 4,000-square-foot lots. You know, that's something to talk about, next to homes with big lots, you know? And the word on the street is that the people who are actually going to build these homes are very well-known for their vinyl siding, you know? So, we'd like to talk about exterior building materials and all that kind of thing. There's plenty to talk about, so we need time to do it, and we've got the Christmas holidays in between it, you know?
Well, and a lot of Mr. Bale's comment about the neighborhood has retained counsel currently, just and the fact that there are answers that are not yet -- or questions not yet answered. I will move that this item be continued until January 27th. Second. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to continue this item to January 22nd. Cast your votes. It's continued. 23, all three items.
All three items? Okay.
Are there any other continuance requests from the public? If not, we'll get on to the items consent docket.
There's three items on the consent docket today. Item one is to initiate an application to the Board of Adjustment for a variance for two neighborhood identification signs on the Meadowbrook Acres neighborhood. Item two is final plat of Valencia addition, and item three is the final plat of Santa Fe Village.
Is there anyone here today who came to discuss items one, two, or three with us?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the consent docket. I would ask my standard question on item number one. Why are we originating this? Why is the city originating this as opposed to the Neighborhood Association or whoever?
The Neighborhood Association was awarded a Neighborhood Improvement Grant to do the signs. They've been working with the city. Councilman Bowman requested that the application be initiated to save them the fee. They're a nonprofit group.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and consent docket's approved.
Item four is PC 10263, an application by Nad Wong to rezone 3304 to 08 Northwest 23rd Street from I-1 Single Family to the O-2 General Office District.
Is the applicant here?
Hi. My name is Nad Wong.
Give us your address also, please.
The address is 2836 Northwest 23rd Street, current address. Do you want the rezoning address, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's 3304 and 3308 Northwest 23rd Street is where we would like to ask permission to rezone.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
I have a question, and it's -- really, my first question is directed to the staff, that the staff recommends approval of this, but on the relevant policies that are cited in the staff report, it's a traditional neighborhoods, major activity corridor, urban development, but then, it refers to, when you say, "Approve the application", to the urban conservation district zoning designation. Could you tell me what controls there would be under the urban conservation district zoning regulations that will dictate landscaping, how this property is going to look, design, materials used, et cetera? Is that covered under urban conservation zoning designation? I mean, really, the question is, this should have been an S-PUD.
Originally, this was an application for C-3, and I think we would agree that with a C-3, it should be...
That was in 1979.
Yeah, well, no, his original application, and we met with the applicant, and since he was cresting an office, suggested he come down to an O-2 designation.
Okay.
And we felt that the O-2 was reasonable, given zoning, that's all the C-3 zoning that's around it. I could look at the urban conservation district regs and see if there's any of those kinds of requirements in there. I don't believe there are.
I'm interested, because this is my neighborhood, and this development along 23rd, we've fought and fought and fought and fought about conversion of the housing that used to be there. This is a vacant piece of property, but what we'd like to, and with the city spending a huge amount of money to resurface 23rd Street and all the things that have gone on, I'd like to know what the building's going to look like, where the parking's going to be, the site plan, et cetera. I'd like to know all that, and so, when I -- when staff said, you know, "All these things, you know, major activity corridor, traditional neighborhoods, the policies cited above that recommend certain design treatments for rezoning to commercial are addressed through retaining the urban conservation district zoning designation", I don't know what that means. I know that if it's an S-PUD, here's my items. You know, signage, lighting to the neighbors to the south of this. You know, we fought that battle on the McDonald's, et cetera, that had been there, and I'm just not comfortable at all to vote in favor of this unless I know what it looks like. But what I'd like to know is, if it's covered by the urban's conservation design regulations, I'll be okay, but I don't know that.
We do have a drawing.
Well, but this is going to be the major -- I mean, I don't want to negotiate this. I'd like to see it in, you know, what it is and all that. None of these are part of our packet, because it's not required. You know, you could just straight O-2 zoning, and that's it. Believe me, I love it that it's an O-2 zoning. I like what you're going to put there. There's no objections at all, but I want to know where the parking is going to be. You know, are you going to park in the front or the back? All these issues, you know, and this, I don't know where the street is. You know, I don't know if this is 23rd Street.
That's 23rd.
Okay, so you have all the parking's right in the front with an asphalt thing and a building's in the back. The way the design should be is the parking should be, here's the building in the front, and you go around and you park in the back. That's the way that Dental Depot, you know, that's what, they're all parked in the back and other things, too. That's why I really can't negotiate what this is without coming in and knowing more, whether or not it's the urban conservation district design guidelines that you're following or if there are guidelines. If you had come in with an S-PUD, we would have had all of these items, talking about lighting, you know, how you're going to shield the lighting from the neighbors to the south, materials, site plan, parking, landscaping, signage, et cetera. All those are covered by an S-PUD, and with this one, I really can't tell, and I can't vote in favor of something I don't know about. So, that's my suggestion. I think it should be an S-PUD.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
If that's what we do, then we'll be open to that.
And but that's just when you tell us, particularly me, because I live just to the south of that, you know, but I admire what you're doing. I support it. I just want to know how it's going to be put together. Think about not having a parking lot in the front, but redesign your building so that you're in the front, you know, with whatever landscaping there is, and the parking's back here. Just kind of think about that.
Perhaps we could suggest, maybe we continue this for a month to allow you to prepare your S-PUD application and bring that back to us. Maybe you can talk to Mr. Chandler.
We'll consult with them and get back.
Is that agreeable with you guys?
Yes, yes, that's fine.
About I move continuance to the second meeting in Jan -- second meeting in January?
13th? 13th to 27th.
Was it 13th of January or the 27th? Which would you prefer?
I think the 13th would be fine.
That'd be enough time for you?
Sure.
All right. So, move.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue item four to January 13th. Cast your votes, and it's continued. Thank you.
Item five is PC 10269, an application by the Oklahoma Conference of the Pentecostal Holiness Church to rezone 108 North Villa Avenue from I-1 Single Family to I-2 Modern Industrial.
My name's Smith Barnes. I'm an attorney for the applicant. We filed this application requesting I-2. The staff has recommended I-1. We have no problem with accepting the staff recommendation and amending our application to I-1.
Okay, Commissioners, no one has signed up. Gave a motion and second to approve item five, amending it to I-1. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item six is SP 427, an application by Oklahoma Gas and Electric for a special permit to erect a telecommunication tower in the I-2 District of 3220 South High Avenue.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Corey Samples. I am the project manager for the applicant, 3220 South High Avenue is the address.
Okay. And just tell us briefly what you're doing. I think a lot of us understand, but...
This particular tower is part of the Smart Grid. You know, many of you have heard of it. It's the Smart Grid Network for OG&E. With this particular network, how it is set up is it's a secure wireless network of communications that will communicate with each one of our, meaning everybody's houses and offices, meters, and they will be able to transmit the data from those meters and read those meters wirelessly. With this particular tower, it is a, it will be receiving communication, and they will be sending that communication into that particular service center to process that data.
There was one statement in our staff report that indicated this is not a tower that you can co-locate with other users, like cellphone operators, for example. Can you explain that to us?
For a couple of reasons. The biggest reason that we, that it does not make sense to co-locate on the T-Mobile Tower to the south or the American Tower that's just to the northwest, is that with it being a secure wireless network and the way that they have to process that particular data into that center, into that particular building that's on that property, is that they've got to get the data to that building. So, the, all of the data is going into that tower. The reason that we're placing the tower where we're at on the property is that we're right by the building, so all of that data's going into that building, and if we were to go on one of those existing towers in the area, we'd still have to put a tower on the property to process that data, to obtain that data and get into that building.
Nick?
Our staff report indicates another reason for building your own tower is, quote, "A microwave back hall".
Yes.
Tell me what microwave back hall is, and also, maybe related to that, or if not, what is this tower going to look like? What's going to be on it?
It is, it's going to be a 125-foot monopole design. So, it's a typical, you know, monopole, you know, like a light pole, obviously, a little larger.
Is it going to have a 100-foot microwave dish on it?
It will not. It will have, it will have six-foot microwave dishes on that. What that does is it, it will, instead of having to run telco or telecommunications fiber to each one of these sites, and there's more than 100 statewide, they are sending that telecommunications back and forth through microwave dishes. And so, it's a very sensitive network, you know? There's a lot of working and reworking as far as, you know, making sure that they can communicate with each other wirelessly, and that's one of the biggest reasons.
How many dishes will be on? You said six foot.
There'll be two, there'll be two microwave dishes.
Two, six?
Any future dishes, any of the other additional dishes will be smaller point-to-point antennas, which are, you know, less than a foot wide.
And the purpose of this tower? To receive data for the center.
That is absolutely correct.
So, expanding that citywide, or should we be anticipating additional towers for the network citywide, or is this going to be pretty much it because it's a receiving tower into the station?
We have been, we've been fortunate enough with our design. We're almost a year into this project. We've been fortunate enough with the majority of our design to be able to avoid this situation through substations, other service center locations that are far enough away from other towers, so we've designed around most of it. With this particular situation, and with this being such a critical site data-wise, it's really the only one that we've run into. In most other situations, we've been able to work around it.
So, you're not anticipating seeing this on a regular basis?
Do not anticipate. Right. That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
What you just said, other situations you've been able to work around it, you mean you have been able to co-locate because you've been able to put your building near a tower or...
We have been able to build through only requiring a building permit, so...
(laughing) You haven't had to come to us, you mean?
Exactly right. With the other two situations where they, OG&E actually owns several towers statewide, and so, we've either co-located on their own existing towers, we are not on any other, anybody else's towers, or we've been in situations where, where, again, we're in industrial areas and we're just fortunate enough to be away from towers far enough to where that setback requirement of a half a mile or quarter mile doesn't affect us.
Can you just ask just a, just a basic question concerning the, what is the impact on the actual residents or the customers for the, for the two-way real-time communication with smart meters? How does that, how does it affect the customer themselves?
You know, ultimately, it affects the customers in a positive way. You know, with this project, if you look up Smart Grid, you know, if you search it on the internet, you're going to see this being implemented state by state with energy companies, and with this particular project, it is a government-funded project, so they are recommending it. It's a, it's a job creator ultimately, and what it does, it saves them the liability of having to go and check meters. Not so much the cost, because they're still either retaining jobs and shifting them around or in creating them as well, but the, ultimately, what it does for customers is that they, we will have the ability to have not only the upgraded meters at our house, but they are able to check our power on a 15-minute basis.
Okay.
And so, it makes it a little bit more intuitive, and they're going to offer, and I'm not sure of the exact details of it, but the thermostats are going to be, they will actually offer a kind of a digital thermostat that will give you tips on how to save energy, and so, it makes their whole network smarter in that they won't have as many outages, you know? And so, from a cost standpoint, no, it doesn't affect, but that's exactly why we're going on OG&E properties and not co-locating. That's a big, you know, the big cost issue is that they don't want to push that cost down and go over budget, you know, and so, they're, so they're locating on their own properties and on their own towers.
Thank you. Should also ultimately be more efficient for homeowners, but also for operating the system, because when they have outages with the Smart Grid system, they'll be able to pinpoint exactly where it is before they start getting all the phone calls saying, "Hey, I don't have any power", so, it should help on several levels.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Commissioners? Action?
I move approval of this application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and we don't have any power. Yeah. I can't help you out there. All right. We'll take an oral vote. Fall in favors? Aye?
Aye.
Post same sign? Okay, you're approved. Thank you.
That was a message from the gods.
Yeah.
Item seven is S-PUD 585, an application by Ron Walters to rezone 1935 Northeast 7th Street from I-2 and C-4 districts to S-PUD 585.
Hello, Ron Walters, 8501 South Walker. Since our last meeting, Mr. Williams was kind enough to sit down with me. We've revised our allowable uses. Basically, we just went down through this thing line by line by line and tried to tune up some of the items. Some automotive veterinary uses, obviously, we don't want any alcohol, alcohol establishments or anything like that there. We adjusted some of the setbacks. I also, I didn't have time because of the holidays on our late meeting. I wasn't able to get a revised site plan into y'all's packet, so I think he handed y'all out one of these a little bit earlier. We've made some adjustments to moving the buildings forward to the street and taking some of the parking back off of Martin Luther. I would like to ask, on one of the TEs, it says the site plan should be amended to show no limits to access along Martin Luther King Avenue. We removed what was on our original site plan and entry from the middle of that. Actually, that entry that's along Martin Luther King right now is a, that is what is currently Northeast 8th Terrace. We are considering abandoning that street at some point down the road here. It's a low-use street. The city won't repair it, but we don't want to use a, we don't want to lose the right to access that. The way this is worded, I just want to get some kind of clarification in it that we would be able to access through that point at some point anyway, so...
We weren't talking about either 8th, either of the two streets, just the driveway that you had on...
That's correct. I'm just afraid when they, when they pull this putt out later down the road, if that's road in there, they're going to see that access point. If we abandon that street when I come to actually get a building permit, and there'll be some confusion.
Leave that in. You just show, show limits of no access on your site plan.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anyone here from the school district. There is? Come on in. up. Jim, if you give us your name and address for the record.
Jim Burkey. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for the Oakland City Public Schools. Need my home address, Jim?
No, that's fine, Jim. Thank you. Any thoughts on this application or uses? I know that-
When you contacted me, the only concern I had on it, obviously, was the alcohol beverage end of it and how that obviously impacts the 300-foot distance we have to have as far as public schools concerned.
Okay. Any concern about fast foods being across the street from the school, or?
Well, it runs counter to what we have been preaching with our students, and that is healthy diets and so forth. We do have a closed campus, but that, that's always a concern.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Burkey while he's here? Thank you, Jim.
We, this project still isn't planned. We don't have a fixed tenant for that. I can promise you that since that school is a closed campus, fast food does not look very promising for us at all. I mean, we've entertained with Subway and talked to a couple of the other guys, but they're like, "No." They don't have any daytime business. It's a, the activity for what they feel like daytime business is too small. The nighttime business would carry in the neighborhoods, but I don't think they got enough daytime business with the school being a closed campus, so.
So, I guess my question is, do you think you'd get a fast food tenant?
Be nice. I, you know, I don't know.
I guess it's just not something I'd encourage. I mean, about the, this is about the alcohol across the street from Douglas. And on the, on the uses, there's still one eating establishments, sit-down, limited alcohol permitted. What is that?
If, if I recall that right, I think that's one, like, if you have a typical restaurant where you serve and the food, the alcohol is limited to the percentage of your sales and all. I know, like, the little gal north of us there that's opening that restaurant up right there, I'd ask her about that. She intends to serve alcohol. I don't know what the restrictions are to go get an alcohol license across from that school, but I'm sure there's some kind of restrictions on that, so.
Well, check me if I'm wrong, but someone wanted to put in, first they'd have to come to us, get an ABC overlay. And to get that, they'd have to conform with the ABEL Commission's requirements, which is to 300 feet. And I don't see how that's going to work, but that's, that's ABEL's deal. That's not our deal. Our deal is, we'd still have to, the fact that the uses in here doesn't matter. We'd still have to approve an ABC overlay, which obviously we're not doing with this application.
That's the impression I was under. I know we've had a lot of address to this issue, but I, I don't think it's today's issue. I don't think it's going to happen anyway.
When we went over this with the developer, we kind of discussed that item, and those would be some of the measures that would have to be taken place. But we did want to eliminate the possibility in this application of any nightclubs and straight alcohol use.
Understand.
The others would be left up to the ABEL Commission and the other entities that would be the government bodies with that. Other than that, we went over the items. I think, I appreciate Mr. Walters setting down and making the adjustments that he's made, him and his other developer partners, to try to bring this in line with a development that would be complementary to the neighborhood development that's going on now.
Okay.
Now, do we see a, a final site plan, or is this it? This is it, isn't it?
This is on the S.P.U.D., I think.
Do we get to see a development site plan as the site developed, each individual facility?
J.J.?
Do we see another, I mean, the, the final site plan on this application? Does it come back?
No, it doesn't. A S.P.U.D. does not come back with a specific plan. P.U.D. would.
So, but here, then here's my, I mean, you've got three rectangle buildings, and one of your uses is fast food with drive-in, you know, I mean, obviously, none of these are going to work for that, you know. So, that's my question, is that what you, what we're allowing you to do is to change this whole thing, depending upon who your tenants will be or what you can negotiate, et cetera. Not that I'm uncomfortable with that, I just wanted to know what our world is. And with that, and with the application that's been revised, I move approval. Second.
Oops. We have a motion and second to approve item six. Cast your votes. We'll see if we have power back.
Seven.
Seven, excuse me. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You're approved. Thank you.
Item eight is C6256, which is the final plat of J.F. Kennedy's Single Family Housing by Coven South of Northeast 10th Street and west of Martin Luther King and Ward 5, Ward 7, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to excuse myself. I have a, I have a personal interest in this project.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dwight Butler with anchor engineering. Representative applicant on this item. I have read the staff report and in looking at the TEs, I do agree to change common area A to a common area A and utility easement, which will alleviate TEs 5 and 6. We do agree to the rest of the technical evaluations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Discussion, Commissioners? No one has signed up.
No, we're not doing a variance approval. Five is gone, right? Okay, well, I move approval of the application with the deletion of C5 and 6. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item eight as condition. Cast your votes.
I keep saying that. We don't have electricity.
All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're approved. Thank you.
Item nine is P.U.D. 1425, an application by K-Rock Development to rezone 14117 North Rockwell from P.U.D. 206 and P.U.D., P.U.D. 829 to P.U.D. 1425.
We had a variance on-
Mr. Chairman, did we not have a variance on 8?
It was resolved by a change-
Okay.
-the applicant made in. So, we eliminated TEs 5 and 6.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Matt Kilpatrick is also here with me on behalf of the applicant. Our application today is for multi-family P.U.D. The P.U.D. subject site actually touches two current P.U.D.s that currently allow for, are for, single family. The reason that we're having to come before this commission today is that the P.U.D. 1300 to the north is zoned R1 and would limit our northern boundary in the P.U.D. to single-story. What we've contemplated in our P.U.D. on the northern boundary is a two-story carriage house style structure with garage on the first floor and single dwelling units on the top floor. In our site plan that the applicant has committed to, we put a restriction in the P.U.D. north 110 feet to only allow the two-story carriage house style structures. There are five, five of those structures in that north 110 feet. As I said, the current P.U.D.s out there would allow for 35 dwelling units per acre and 24 respectively. Our density, we're going to bring down to just under 15. It's 14 and some change. We're calling it 15 in the P.U.D. We think decreasing the density by that much will be a good use out there and complementary to the area. The staff has recommended approval subject to two TEs, which we are okay with, and I think your approval.
Discussion, Nick?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is a good project. As Mr. Box pointed out, the density is coming down. The only concern I had with this application was that this applicant also owns the adjacent land. They're not including it in the P.U.D. revision, which would have been nice. That said, I'll move for approval.
Second. Do you have any notion of what will surround this, David, before we cast our votes?
I'll have a map. I do, because I've studied it.
Okay, I'll ask you.
It has more R4 in it. The applicant has indicated that they, they don't want any more R4, that they want to build a, kind of a single-family brownstone type thing over there. And yet, that's down the road. So, they've elected not to include it in the P.U.D.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item nine. Signify your approval with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is P.U.D. 1423, application by Kenneth P. Haley to rezone 12301 Piedmont Road from AA District to P.U.D. 1423, Ward 8.
I'm Randy Hill with ED Hill Surveying and Engineering. I represent the applicant Kenneth Haley. And in accordance with the, some of your all's expressions at the last meeting, we've made some revisions to the planning and development to take out certain uses. We've also made a requirement that there be a traffic study submitted, and we've reduced the density almost in half. So, the overall site is about 50 acres, slightly over 50 acres in size. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? We have two people signed up, so.
I do have a couple of questions, Randy, before we hear from them. Randy, reading in the P.U.D., I may be interpreting this wrong, but apparently you're providing for canopy signs with letters of up to 24 inches, backlit across the entire run of this quarter-mile commercial. Is that correct?
Um-
It'd be section 8.44?
Yeah, we, we agree to the actual sign restrictions that the staff had asked us to agree to, but we'd-
Well, the sign restrictions, as I read them, were basically eight-foot monument signs with 100 square feet for the, but then there's another section that talks about canopy sign that concerned me. Because I can see, like I said, a quarter-mile frontage of backlit 24-inch signs on every, every establishment. I can also see an 8.51 curb cuts along the state highway every 200 feet. Am I reading that correctly?
There, there has to be a separation of 200 feet between-
Well, right. So, you know, theoretically, every 200 feet, I can have a curb cut on that improved state highway.
We'll have to get all curb cuts approved by the state.
Well, I understand ODOT will have to approve it, but-
Yes.
-I don't see how that, how that's reasonable. I don't, I don't know why that should be in the P.U.D. And then my other question would be, where we talked about lot sizes and setbacks, it appeared that maybe your garage setbacks were, on some of those lots were awfully tight. I'd like for you to address that.
I'd be happy to address, maybe address all.
Well, one part says no lot, there are lots shall have no minimum lot size. And then another part talks about taking access to private drives, things like that. That led me to believe that maybe we're, we're really jamming things together there. And I couldn't under, I couldn't, from my staff report, I couldn't discern that, but that's why I'm asking.
That should be only for commercial lots, not, not the residential lots.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
If you have a problem with the canopy sign language, uh-
Well, I'll just defer that to my astute sign expert down here to my right. That, that's the way it appears to me. I, first thing, first part of my question was, is, is my interpretation correct? Is that what it said?
Yeah, it would, it would permit canopy signs with 24-inch letters. I mean, if that's a problem, I'd be happy to revise it. I mean, I-
It is a problem. I like the eight-foot monument sign issue. That's, that's at least compatible. But the canopy signs can be just as offensive and intrusive, particularly along the highway where you're going to be, as, as Nick said, a quarter of a mile of all your commercial. And here are these backlit canopy signs, just, you know, and the neighbors to the west, you know, et cetera. So, I mean, if that, that, that is an issue, you know. But I think I want to defer my remainder of my comments to after we hear who it is that signed up to protest.
I think, Nick, with respect to the curb cuts, we want to see that, when we see the specific plans for the development of the parcels, so we understand what the traffic flow is going to be.
And then, again, ODOT will have to approve all those also.
Right.
Well, let me, let me just make this editorial, that, that, this is what we were talking about last time, is that, that we're, we're asked to rezone this area from AA to whatever it is, C3, R1, whatever. And the traffic study is going to come when they submit a preliminary plat. My belief is, and my objection to this application is, is that the cat's out of the bag. Once we rezone it, it's all done. You know, they can maybe revise it, et cetera. But I do know that the street to the south of this development is a gravel road. I know that there's a highway coming in. And why cannot there be a traffic study prior to us rezoning this? We know the density, the site plan has all the density of this many people that are going to be there, 200-foot each curb cuts, that's subject to ODOT's approval. But a traffic analysis can take into account the density of the, of this development, what you're going to be using it for, 10 acres or so of commercial activity, curb cuts on the highway every 200 feet, and they can throw that in their computer and say yes or no before we rezon. And I, really, I, I think this is premature for us to do this. If, what, what we will do by rezoning this without that information, it's done and done. And we've done that over and over and over because, well, traffic, we'll get that later. I think we ought to get it right now before we consider rezoning this.
Well, our historic policy, as we have been asking for traffic plans, they've been coming in at the plating stage. There's a discussion with staff now where we're working on a proposal to council to get traffic studies where we have significant redevelopment proposals in advance of the rezoning. It does make sense for us to be looking at traffic, traffic issues at the zoning stage where there are applications that are going to have an impact.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with that, and I agree with Mr. Wright's position. However, on this particular application, not being a traffic engineer, I can't say this with certainty, but I don't think, you know, I see a traffic study for any use here that would not be supported because when this road is improved, it's going to be an improved state highway. I can't imagine a density that would not be supported by that road. So, this may not be the application to make that, that battle. Exactly.
Oh, I don't think we should do it on an application-by-application basis. I think we ought to have-
No, no, I, I agree, but-
A proposal that we develop and owe to the council.
What I'm saying is, if you're, if you're going to cite a case, this is probably not the case to cite-
Right.
-for that argument.
I agree with, I agree with that, although I would like to consider to defer the curb cut discussion until we get to the specific site plans. I'd like to strike that from the P.U.D. language right now because I don't know that's going to be appropriate.
Do you know what's, what's going in? I mean, this is still speculation.
No, no, we'll have a, we will do specific site plans. That's why we-
I, I understand, but you don't have your tenants, occupiers-
Not at this point.
Et cetera.
Right.
You know, the problem I have with potentially, on this particular site, we'll limit it to this, is this, is that across the street is the Village Verde, which is a very ambitious, large program that's going to, that will be ongoing over a number of years. Randy's got, which frankly is a good idea, develop across the street from what's going to be a very large residential area. I think it's, and I think it's appropriate. I'm reluctant to start commissioning traffic studies at this stage on this property. I have no idea what the timeline is, what the uses are, because I think uses begat traffic. And the study is of not much value to us at this point, at least for me, until we get a better idea about what's- idea about what's actually planned, proposed, if he's planning two-hundred, three-hundred single-family houses as one use that's completely different easily than another use. And so, I don't think we're quite ready for the traffic study yet. I agree, we need one.
I would take a different position for this reason. Once you zone a site, and you don't know exactly what's going to go in, but you have to look at it and say, what is the most intense or maximum possible use that can go into a site like this? You do a traffic analysis for that. As it develops, you can come back off of that in terms of what might be required. You can't ever go back later on, as you get a much more intense use than you anticipated, and fix it. So, I think that you look at zoning from the situation of, okay, it's whatever it's going to be. Let's say he wanted to do fifty acres of R-4 and three acres of commercial, C-3. Well, you'd look at, well, what's the most dense R-4 use that could go into fifty acres, and what can you do with that three acres of commercial? And if he comes back later and says, well, you know, I really think that it'd be, we're going to use it as R-1, that's really what the whole area is developed as, you wouldn't have the same intensity of traffic, but at least you've had some sort of a plan in place in case it comes in at the most intense level. Let's hear from the people who have signed up. Philip Owen. If you'd give us your name and address, Mr. Owen, and share your concerns.
Certainly. Excuse me. My name is Philip Owens II. My address is 2300 West Anne Fourth Road in Edmund. I'm here on behalf of, I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of my parents, Philip and Margaret Owens. And I believe my mother spoke at the last hearing on this. They are the owners of the property immediately west of this property, across Cotton Tail Road. It doesn't border it, but there's a strip there. And then, they own the property immediately across Cotton Tail Road to the west and are in the process of completing a rather large residence on that property. And I think that, I'm here to reiterate their concerns as expressed at the last meeting. I think largely along the lines of Commissioner Bright's concerns, with respect to the fact that the, a large portion of the frontage of this is not only, you've got part of it on Piedmont Road, Highway 4, and also a significant frontage on 122nd Street, which is a gravel road that is not in particularly good shape, even as gravel roads go, in my opinion. I'm not an engineer of those things, but I drive that road fairly regularly, including a hill on that road to the western part of this tract, that in certain weather circumstances like we had this time, or coming up about a year ago, was impassable for over a week, I believe. Now, granted, that was a fairly significant event, but still, there are issues with that road in addition to it just being a gravel road. And my parents' concerns, obviously, just having invested approximately a million dollars with this property and the home and the accessory buildings there, is the traffic that's going to be imposed upon that road and its ability to withstand that traffic, especially if you put residential in this area. And knowing the area, people of, if there's residential homes in that area, they're going to use the 122nd Street exit. They're not going to come in off of the state highway simply because of the traffic issues there. And so, that road is going to get a lot of use, and we certainly don't believe that it's, as it sits now, it would be appropriate to approve a rezoning with these proposed uses, certainly at least not without a traffic study, given the current state of that particular roadway.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would, that's the, oh, I'm sorry, that's the only one person signed up. I would have to imagine this, this site develops, 122nd Street would be paved, would it not? JJ?
Question?
122nd Street is gravel now, would certainly have to be paved if this site was developed.
Yes.
And that would be a requirement we would make, would it not, at the plating stage, or?
Yes, and sure, it would be a requirement of the traffic impact study.
Right.
Excuse me. Who would pay for the paving of 122nd Street?
The developer.
Would the developer pay for it?
Yeah.
Is that right? So, it's a developer?
If it's required by the traffic study, I would think yes. No?
Why would it be required by public street? Just get your out. I mean, unless it would, unless it's already not.
Well, it's not. It's gravel. Is that right or wrong?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity. Nick's making a face.
For municipal councilor, but I didn't know that we could require people to.
Pay for roads?
I think it has to relate to, it has to relate to their, what effect that they would have on the impact. I mean, it would have to relate to the impact of the development, and they'd be required to pay proportion of that if it did.
Okay.
I could see the traffic study requiring or prohibiting development along 122nd until it is paved.
Okay.
But I can't see it saying, "You go pave 122nd." I might be wrong.
Well, doesn't matter today, I guess, but. Any other discussion, Mr. Hill?
Well, I might say that as far as the sign, the canopy signs are concerned, I'd be happy to strike that language and just eliminate that altogether, that.
And the two-hundred-foot curb cuts, we can leave that for a later day?
We're going to have site-specific plans along there, so you're going to see those, obviously. And we're going to have to get the state to approve whatever we do there as well. So, I mean, I think they'll be, that'll all be addressed in time. And as far as the road's concerned, you know, the fact there's going to be a school built there, we're going to see improvements out there. And so, I think that whether or not we're improving it, the county commissioner improves it, or the city improves it, there'll be road improvements. We know that Piedmont Road is getting ready to be improved. It's in the next three years of the state highway's eight-year plan. So, there's going to be road improvements that are going to be made in the area.
I think you could determine the number and location of curb cuts, it's a specific plan, but retain the two-hundred, the minimum two-hundred-foot separation. Okay. Further discussion, action?
Mr. Chairman, I truly believe this application is premature. However, noting staff report, clients with the plan, Hill's agreement, signage on, or delete the canopy signs, move for approval, along with the modification to the approach.
Yes. Second. Okay. We have a motion and second to approve item 10. Cast your votes by signifying aye to approve.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign for no?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's.
Aye.
Oh, give me a show of hands, I guess, for approval.
Six.
Yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Got it?
Very close.
Got it. Thank you. Item 11 is CE 6243, revised final plat of Heredey Oaks Edition, Section 3, Ward 8.
Good afternoon. Commissioners Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. We have read the TEs and agree with all of them, except for number three. And as you may remember from our last meeting, we began a discussion on that, and that how from the original preliminary plat and the original traffic study, the conditions out there had changed quite a bit from that original time. The original report had an existing traffic signal at Pennsylvania and one at Western and nothing in between. And since that time, we've had two additional traffic signals put in. During that discussion, Commissioner Yoko brought up an issue that he had, and I think several other commissioners, about the fifteen-foot setback in this particular plat, and had asked if the developer might be willing to go with a twenty-foot setback for garages, if I remember correctly.
Right.
And in discussing that with the developer, he has agreed that he would swap that for the deferral of those items in number three.
Okay. No one has signed up. Commissioners?
Chairman, I believe you expressed better than I could last meeting. This is one that predates our existing policy. I'll move for approval, the modification to twenty feet.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and second to approve item 11 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you, Chris, for doing that. Item 12 is CE 6257, the final plat of Quail Creek, Section 32, in Ward 8.
Randy Hill with ED Hill Surveying and Engineering Company, representing the applicant. I think we're, we agree with the summary of technical evaluations, less number five, I believe, that's being removed.
We can delete number five, I understand, yes.
And we agree with the remainder.
No one has signed up, Commissioners, and we're deleting TE number five.
Move approval, deleting TE number five.
Second. Wait, again, second, I didn't hear. I'm sorry. Okay. We have a motion and second to approve item 12, deleting TE five. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 13 is CE 795, an application by Builders Inc. to close the public parking easement between Northwest Grand Boulevard and West Country Club Drive, east of North May, in Ward 2.
Mike Wofford with Derner Saunders-Daniel and Anderson, representing Builders Inc. of Wichita, Kansas. This is, Builders Inc. is a commercial property company in Wichita. This is their first purchase of a property in Oklahoma City to diversify their portfolio. On the southeast corner of Grand Boulevard and May Avenue, there is a building that's occupied by Starbucks, Dragon Five Salon, and Orangely Frozen Yogurt. And the building itself, on the west side of the building, there's a small public parking area that was dedicated to the public years ago, but it's surrounded by three major streets and then the building itself. And it's really closely integrated with the building. The front of the building, all three of the leased spaces, front the parking lot, and we're asking it be closed to give the owner flexibility with respect to that lot, and to not make it available except for public, for parking for the building in the future.
This would just inform the way the property is used now?
Yes, and the current property owner has no intention to change the parking lot at this time.
Is there some problem with the way the parking lot operates currently?
No, it's just public parking. And the thing is that there aren't any other public uses in the area. It's closely integrated with the building. It's just right in front of those entrances. And so, the builder wants, I mean, excuse me, the owner would like the flexibility to deal with anything in connection with that parking in the future, change signage, whatever the municipal code allows. But there's no current plan to change the actual use, other than the fact that it won't be available for public parking. It'll be available only for the building.
I don't, I don't get it. I don't understand the need for this. I just don't, I don't, the way the site is set up, nobody else is going to park there except people that are using those buildings.
Well, you would hope not, but it is available for public parking right now.
But there aren't any other uses that are in close proximity. I mean, they're across public streets.
Right. Now, the, of course, Country Club Drive there, once you get into there, almost looks like the rest of the parking lots in the area. We would like it to be available only for the use of this building. There are some commercial uses to the south. But people really, you're right, people shouldn't be walking back and forth across Country Club Drive, even though it looks like a part of the parking lot there. But the owner would like to have control of that property, which is their property other than the easement. It's a bit antiquated in the sense that the city did close other similar public parking surrounding that area in the past for the same reason. Allow the flexibility to develop.
I have no problems with it, except for the statement that you said, that the owner, property owner, might want to do something on that piece of property, such as erect a fifty-foot sign that you can enter C-3. Oh, no, there's no, there's no current plans to do anything like that.
If you look at the site plan, the area that's crosshatched where the bank is now, that was all public parking at one time, I think.
Yes.
And that's been vacated to allow for the property to be used by the owner as the owner wanted to use it.
This is really, this question from staff, but isn't this really a, more of a housekeeping matter than anything else?
Yeah, that's how I read it.
And technically, if it were to be left as public, I could bring all my excess vehicles there and just park them and leave them, theoretically. And this, right now, I could. And this guy is trying to run this business there, wouldn't have a way to prevent that. To me, this is housekeeping.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 13. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 14. Item 14 is PC 10270, an application by OMNS LLC to rezone 1225 Northwest 40th Street from R-1 Single Family to R-2 Medium Low Density Residential, Ward 2.
John Foster, on behalf of the owner. Commissioners, no one has signed up. They want to do a duplex here off of Claussen Boulevard. Discussion, Janice.
I've been out and looked at this site and talked with the owners of the property. They've developed the medical clinic that fronts onto Claussen, and, you know, they're wanting to develop this property residentially. It's like halalaya. So, if there's somebody else who wants to be heard, I would move for approval.
Second. Okay. No one has signed up. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 15 has been continued until January the 27th. Item 16 is ABC 725, application by Dave &amp; Buster's of Oklahoma for an ABC 2 overlaying C-3 community commercial at 5501 North May Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Director, members of the commission. My name's Randy Malone. I am an Oklahoma City lawyer. I represent Dave &amp; Buster's. Dave &amp; Buster's is a full-service restaurant. They have a full menu. We're applying for an ABC overlay. If you don't have any questions, if you have any, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, I'll just keep my mouth shut.
I did want to ask you, you know, there is that little sort of stub of street there, 52nd Street. Will they continue that on out to May and use it?
I believe they plan to.
Okay. Well, so then, maybe that is a little bit of answer about how they'll get better access to the property.
Right.
Is there anybody who wants to be heard on this?
Yes.
Warren Nguyen.
Well, while he's coming up, I have one question for you.
Clarification.
Clarification. The overlay you're asking for is just the Dave &amp; Buster's site. It's not the remainder of this.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nguyen, if you'll come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
My name's Warren Nguyen. I represent St. John's Episcopal Church and School at 5401 North Brookline Avenue. I have some papers with pictures. Sorry, I don't have enough copies for everybody.
You're directly west of this site?
We are directly west of this site.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. We have several concerns. I'm here to protest the override application. The application property is immediately to our east, and it is adjacent to St. John's Church and School. The Title 37 allows for alcohol restaurant operation within three, or beyond three-hundred feet. This does not, this property is not three-hundred feet away from our property. It is approximately, the far wall, according to the diagram, is approximately 225 feet away. Our church holds services throughout the week, and of course, during the evening, day and evening hours. We have youth activities that are held from time to time on Sunday evening, and we strongly believe that the proximity of this type of establishment believe that the proximity of this type of establishment would be harmful and present possible physical hazards to the young people we serve. Meetings of religious, and meetings and religious study groups also meet in our facility during the week and the weekend, as well as the evening. We operate a pre-K through 8th grade school, we also have an after-care function that lasts until approximately 6 o'clock in the evening. We depend on car pools for, for transportation purposes. Our athletic field is also used by youth soccer programs and is sometimes used by neighborhood children as a playground in the evening hours. St. John's Park also provides a child development program, which operates year-round. We serve a, from between 100 and 125 young people on a regular basis throughout the week. Our other concern are, basically, another concern besides the alcohol and the presence of that type of a service is the traffic. I have learned recently, before I put this program, or after I put this program together, that the plot allows for basically no access from May Avenue to this property, that all of the access would be from Brookline, which means that the traffic on Brookline Avenue, if you'll look at the second, or the, I'm sorry, the third and fourth pictures, that's a picture of our school zone, that's Brookline Avenue looking south towards 50th Street and Brookline looking north towards the Northwest Expressway. And it is clearly marked as a school zone, and, and the proposal would, for this establishment, as I understand it, would put a tremendous amount of traffic on Brookline Avenue, causing us problems with car pools, with access to our own property for services, meetings, and everything else. So, I respectfully request that you consider denying this, this application.
Questions of Mr. Nguyen? Thank you, sir.
There's no city separation between a school and a restaurant that serves beer or mixed beverage, and I, my understanding is that if there's no separation with the state, as long as it's primarily a restaurant, that would be an able commission. Yeah?
Just one question. Randy? Just so I'm clear before we go on, I didn't mean to interrupt you, John, I'm sorry, we want to hear the protester. Your access points into your property, as I look at this particular, there's an access off of May Avenue toward the south end of your property that you're, I guess, intending to maintain, is that right?
Yes.
Is this, I can't remember if there's one that comes in right off the on-ramp right before you get to May, as you can turn back west, I just can't rem, I can't remember that. So, you're only, you're going to maintain the access point off of May Avenue?
Yes.
That's relatively close to the target, now, your, your future plans with respect of this, I've heard different things, are you considering a signalization there on May, putting the signal light there at 52nd and May, or is there some talks on?
I, I haven't been in that discussion.
Okay, that's, all right, all right, fair enough. Now, then, and where roughly, there's two buildings that I see, there's the old Duncan Brothers Building, and then there's the old car dealership building, right? We're both the smiculous, ultimately the smiculous building. Where are you proposing the site of your building, kind of in relation to those two, to the extent that you're able to tell me? If you can.
You may know better.
He may have, he may know better, yeah.
Right, it's pretty much toward where the C3 is. Do you agree with that? Where the, where the letter, the letter C, the number 3.
Those are existing, they're going to be demolished.
My understanding is that the, that the building will be, would be on the, the north end of the, towards the Northwest Expressway.
This is the site plan.
Yeah, yeah. The first picture you see in what I handed you, I took from the southeast corner of that diagram, which looks right onto our playground and church facility, church and school facility.
Well, this entire tract is C3, as I read it.
Yes.
And.
Right.
It looks to me, I mean, you've got 23, almost 24 acres, given its location, it's going to develop pretty intensely.
Sure.
I mean, if not right away, over a period of several years, I mean, if the notion is to have a couple of restaurants and a hotel or some other sort of commercial use, we're going to have traffic here, and it's inevitable that that's what's going to happen and that no matter what we do here today, Brookline is going to become a much busier street than it is now.
Well, I have a question on that. Looking at your site plan and following along on Mr. Hensley's question, are there only two access points to this track? One on the southeast corner and one on the northwest corner?
Actually.
No, I'm asking the applicant, sir.
I believe that's correct, you said, is that your understanding?
I think that's true.
The intention is to take 52nd Street.
52nd Street all the way.
All the way to May, to the east.
I understand that, but the access point into this property off of May would be right there at 52nd and, and May.
Almost, yeah.
And the other main access point would be down in the northwest corner, leading back to the Service Road or the Northwest Highway.
Well, look, it shows one just about halfway.
Yeah, there's one halfway.
Down the western side of the property.
Well, that's with the little, the checkered line.
Right.
And that was my question, is that really an access point?
On Brookline?
Yes, right in the middle, that is, okay.
There are actually six drives between, on Brookline, from 52nd Street to the Northwest Expressway, there are six driveways broken and per.
The way it is right now, I understand that, but I'm looking at their site plan, and I was trying to figure out if there were two or three curb cuts on Brookline, and, and there are three. That, that was my question.
I haven't seen their site plan.
I see two, two nick plus 52nd Street, one in the center of the property, one down at the north end, as you suggest, off of Brookline, so I just see two.
Well, and then 52nd Street.
Oh, I said 52nd Street, and then the other two off of Brookline as well.
I see 52nd and then the north end, and then one right in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's three.
Okay, and that's what I said, 52nd Street and the other two. If I could inject a bit to the discussion, this is an application for an ABC 2 alcoholic beverage consumption license, and we have no jurisdiction whatsoever on what's going to go on with this 20-some-odd acre C3-zoned commercial property. And even though we would love to get our teeth into this and really plan it and do whatever we can do, we don't have jurisdiction over this at all. And, and sympathetic to your plea, they can fit a hotel, they can fit other restaurants, they can do, and, and the traffic on Brookline is going to ruin your day at some point in time, and we don't have any way of, of preventing that unless the applicant, the owner of the property, wants to do something different, and they have to come in with a PUD. And if they came in with a PUD, well, then, we would have jurisdiction over ingress egress, traffic signalization, protection on Brookline, protection of yours, fencing, you know, I mean, along Brookline to, to build a, a nice fence, you know, that, that wouldn't interfere with you. But my, my observation is, is that the measurement that you submitted on the number of feet between the restaurant, you go a straight line there and there, and I would, I would bet that a diagonal line from where the restaurant is proposed to be to St. John's is more than, it's more than 300 feet, I would just.
But that's not how they measure.
Right.
Doesn't apply.
It don't apply. It don't apply to this.
Oh, pardon me, no, it doesn't apply. So, this is my point, is that an ABC 2 is food and alcohol, I mean, you have to have so much, you know, you're not talking about a full-time bar that's going to be, you know, it's just, I mean, it's a, it's not a bar, it's a restaurant, and it's a franchise restaurant with, with, according to the newspaper, some good reputation about what they do. I am totally sympathetic with your plea, but I think that this probably qualifies for an ABC 2 location, and I'm going to move approval. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve. Application 16, cast your votes. Oh. Eight to one. It's approved.
Item 17 is PC 10264, an application by LLR LLC to rezone 6400 Southwest 44th Street from I-2 with the airport environments, environments overlay Zone 2 to I-3 Heavy Industrial with Airport Environments Overlay Zone 2.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Nathan Richter, my address is 1102 East State Highway 152 in Mustang. I'm a Mustang attorney that represents the applicant, LLR LLC, in two companion cases, items number 17 and 18 on the agenda today. The application for the special permit, which is item number 18, is the, is a application to this commission to approve a special permit which would allow recycling operations to be conducted on a vacant piece of property located approximately at 6400 Southwest 44th Street. In conjunction with that, to give this commission a little bit of history, when the special application was, the special permit application was filed, we were under the belief that the property was entirely zoned I-3, ultimately, it was determined that it was zoned I-2, therefore, the rezoning request was also filed. There is a small strip of property to the east side that is approximately 150, 160 feet wide that is zoned I-3, that is owned by LLR LLC. In working with the staff, we have modified our application to encompass approximately 10 acres, which is the southern portion of this subject property. LLR LLC actually owns the 45 acres, which extends from Newcastle Road north to 44th, but the subject of our application would just be the southern 10 most acres. Subject to any questions regarding 17 or 18, I'd move approval of both applications.
Commissioners, any, any questions, comments, a motion? I'll move approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 17, cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, I think the applicant ought to be read this noise damage requirement, be made aware of it.
Do you have a copy of our staff report?
I do.
If you look at the staff recommendation on the last page of text, says, should this application be approved, a navigation easement should be requested in order to relieve, not relive, but relieve the city of liability due to aircraft noise damages.
We are aware of that, yes.
Okay. Now, item 18.
Item, item 18 is a companion item, and this is the application by LLR LLC for the special permit to operate scrap operation of this facility, at this site.
Again, have you looked at the technical evaluations, and are you aware and in agreement with all of those?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Move item 18. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 18, cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 19 is C-6247, a final plat of Cedar Ridge in Morgan Creek, in Ward 3.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Fox, I'm here on behalf of Cheryl Fincher, and she is the developer of this property. The plat that you see in front of you is consistent with the plat, the preliminary plat that you all have already approved, and we have worked with your staff, as you'll know, we continued this case last time, there were some questions in regard to an existing easement and lot lines, and we have never gotten an answer back from water and wastewater, but this is a situation where we would like to have you look at this application, we'd like for it to be approved as-is, which is consistent with the preliminary plat, and that would mean that on item 3, which talks about taking the lot lines off of County Line Road and moving them 40 feet inward, we'd ask you to take that out. What that would, in essence, do is take 16 of our lots and make them lots that would not be marketable. Obviously, if the city wanted to buy 16 lots, we're in the business of selling land, but this is an existing water line, and Cheryl's father, years ago, gave this easement for the water line to the city, and with the understanding that there'd be development that would occur, and development is now occurring, and we see no reason that lot lines should be moved based on an easement and a water line that would be in somebody's backyard.
Before we ask for public words, Nick?
I don't understand. Why, I, this is a question for staff, I guess, why do we want this? Now, I think of all the other easements we have that are just that, they're easements, people know they can't build on the easement, but, but you don't move the lot for it, and what's different about this, this case? I don't know if that's a JJ question, or a...
My name's Nathan Madewald, I'm with the Utilities Department. The reason why we wanted to offset the lot lines and push them to the easement line was because of the magnitude of the improvement here. Normally, easements that we have running through developments are, are for smaller distribution mains or smaller sanitary sewer collector lines. This is a 36-inch water main. So, as a lot of you have probably seen, when you have a large main break, it, it creates a river, and so what we're trying to do is limit liability to the city and to the Utilities Department in the event of a main break.
All right, help me. The easement is a 40-foot easement?
It's, it's approximately 85 feet off of the, the center line, or the section line.
Off the section line, but.
An additional 35 feet from the normal statutory and 17 additional for street right way.
Well, help me, water line in that easement, where's our water line?
It's approximately 65 to 70 feet off of the center line, or the section line.
So, you're showing the water line in this diagram as the...
I can't tell what that is scale-wise, though.
Right.
So, if that water line would, looking at our diagram, not that one, but the, the other one, if that water line were to break and you had to get in there and repair it, you would need the remainder of your, your easement to maneuver?
Yes, I mean, we'd take down any permits in that area.
If, if that was my lot and I built a house on it, but I didn't build that into the easement, why is that different than the easement in my backyard for my sewer line, for example? You're still going to have to work within your easement, this looks like a taking to me.
It is.
And, you know, I don't understand why, I guess, why it's consistent with what we've been doing for years.
How, how is it going to relieve the liability of the city? That line is still going to be there, and you're still going to get flooded if that line breaks. Doesn't make any difference, how does that ease the liability?
It, it's still a possibility, it's just we have more control when stuff is out in more of a right-of-way area versus in somebody's backyard. We have less control.
any distinguishing characteristic between what, the easement that's in my backyard for the sewer or whatever it is, and I know that if that thing goes haywire, trucks and trees are gone, and you're in there just on your easement working on it, that's not, there's no difference in this, except that what Commissioner Gillis just said. My belief is, when I read this, I think it's an unauthorized taking of somebody's property. And I can, I mean, we used to have condemnation proceedings or eminent domain proceedings, not just a requirement. Move the property line 40 feet, and this property now is mine. I can't agree to this. And I don't see the liability, Jim, you know, that, not a hill of beans worth a difference at all. You can work this, if this big old thing, you know, breaks, et cetera, your, the city's liability is absolutely no different if it's an easement or if you own the property or whatever. It's no different. So, I really, I'll agree with Mr. Box.
How, how is it different than the lots to the north? Did you require that, to own those lots to the north?
The lots to the north do have their, their fence line or their property lines on the easement line.
But, I mean, did you require them to move their lots up and take their, their property?
I apologize, I wasn't with the city at that time. I'm not sure that the distinction...
That's the whole point.
The development south of Southeast 44th, too, the Silver Leaf Section 1, they encompassed the easement into their lots, but they provided an additional 50-foot length to the length of their lots, whereas the standard lots in that development were 125, they went to 175. The ones with the water line.
Dennis, your client knows that they can't build on that. If it's an easement, they can't build where the easement line is.
Absolutely.
And it's like, nobody can. You know, that's the...
And my, my client's father is the one that gave the easement to the city with the understanding that, that the line would be built and that we would be developing this property. It'd be good for the city and good for us. So, this came out of the blue and...
One other question, Dennis, or maybe for staff. This is a final plat. There was a preliminary plat on this on August of '04. This question raised then?
No. Staff probably, if they weren't concerned about it, had missed it at that time. It wasn't in the preliminary plat.
Yeah, the lots that you see are consistent with preliminary plats, so that we, this caught us unaware. Dennis, your buyers can put a fence, I mean, they'd fence in their whole backyard even over the easement, I assume, and they might even landscape over the easement. People do that all the time. Correct. With the understanding that if, if there is a break, that fence will come down and the city will be in there taking care of whatever they need to in regard to the line, and, and we understand that, and that's part of having easements in your backyard.
Let me ask Public Works a question, because I had a water main break in my front yard and gush, and the city came in and, of course, did this marvelous trench in the front yard that was about 25 feet deep and 15 feet wide, and then they busted the driveway apron to the street and so forth. But they came back in and replaced it when they were done.
Yes, sir.
Do you do that in a situation like this? If this main breaks and you come in and take down a row of backyard fences and take out landscaping, what, what happens to the property owner in that case?
Typically, we try to return the property back to its existing condition.
Okay.
Now, if it's something that's out of the scope of our normal line maintenance, like if they have a special fence that they can't go in and replace, we can't really do that. But if it's a stockade fence, they'll take it down and put it back up. I'm not sure what the proposal is for the fencing on that, that right-of-way line.
So, that's the city's additional liability if there is anything, and just restore it?
Plus, the city routinely denies these kinds of applications for, I mean, the city doesn't have any liability, does it, unless it has noticed that there's a problem with the line and fails to correct it and all that stuff? And they totally turn down these kind of claims for reimbursement from people. I don't think the city has any liability if there's a main burst.
Well, don't tell them about my front yard then, please, but...
They do come in and do mitigation, and, you know, they put things back as best they can, but you can't go down there and sue them for the 150-year-old oak that they, you know, that got taken out when the line burst or whatever. They don't replace that kind of stuff.
One more question for you, Dennis. I made a comment earlier, and obviously, I don't think you were talking with Public Works. Maybe you were, but Public Works is here to respond, so I'm thinking it was someone that you said you'd been working with the city, but you didn't get a response?
Yeah, I, we met with Marcia Slaughter...
Water Department.
And pointed out to Marcia the things that I pointed out here today, that being that we were the ones that gave the easement, we were understanding we could develop it. There were other plats in close proximity that have similar circumstances, and so we were trying to understand what was this new, new policy, knowing that there's nothing in your subdivision regulations that would provide for this. And Marcia was getting ready to get out of town, so she just said, you know, we would hear back, and we never heard anything, so.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion, commissioners? Motion?
I'll move approval of the application with the deletion of TE number five, is it?
It's three.
Number three. Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19, taking out TE 3. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 20 is S P U D 593, an application by Jay Height to rezone 4126 Northwest 16th from I-1, S P U D 593, Ward 3.
Sir, give us your name and address and record.
Jay Height, I own the property at 4126 Northwest 16th.
Thank you.
And I was told that, on the city planning stuff, it said in I-1 for my building, and it was a, I mean, it was, you know, like a grandfather or whatever, it was an L-1, and the zoning inspector said, you know, you can't operate a business or something out of a residential zone, and I was trying to correct it, and they said, you can't do this, and you can't do this, and I'm trying to get things corrected so I can get things zoned or I can use the shop as a, like a mechanic shop or a, you know, a, well, what I've tried to get it zoned for. I talked with Lance a little bit, and he's tried to work, and I said, well, he said, an L-1, and then I tried an L-2, because it wouldn't fit to what I wanted to do. And he said that probably wouldn't do it because of the zoning, but, you know, because it's fairly close proximity to a few houses. And I am trying to, I'm not trying to create a big business, I'm trying to create a usage and be able to facilitate more than just a storage. That's what they said, basically, you can only use it for, it's just storage and not have anything almost going in there or, and it's been, through the history, it's been a, it was first built by VT Helm as a sheet mail shop. That's where the, and that's just what he used it for back in the 20s and 30s for, for the building. In fact, that, when they did the original plat, it was done as a commercial zoning, you know, even before a lot of the schools or any of the houses were in. And I was trying to, I mean, that's on the plats that it was done, and I'm trying to make sure I can be used for, you know, a little bit of mechanics. I got rented partly to a wave runner, a person that repairs the motors and other things in the wave runner, basically, and it would, you know, take out his business. I'd have to allow a little bit of time to, you know, evict him or whatever to, you know, correct, so he could find a new place of property. And I'm trying to get the zoning to match with what it was, you know, originally used for. This is what I was trying to apply for.
Well, we've got three people signed up in protest, so we'll hear from them.
Okay.
James Matthews?
Yeah.
Okay. Valerie Rivas, then that would be you. If you'll pull the microphone down, please, and give us your name and address.
Yes, I'm Valerie Rivas. I own the property 4128 Northwest 16th, which is directly to the west of his property. Any change in what change we've seen is a detriment to the neighborhood. The property already has, is below the neighborhood standards already, and the change is just bringing it down even farther.
Okay. Thank you. Left also? Okay. Commissioners, comments, questions, action?
Mr. Chairman, looking at the history here, our staff report, obviously, there is quite a history to this property. Clearly doesn't fit the neighborhood, and apparently never has, going back to 1952. The compromise, if you want to call it that, was through court action to allow a single-use storehouse only. It's obviously now been expanded to more than warehouse use. He's asking for even more. I just don't see how this compatible with, with the neighborhood. I can't support it.
I would agree, and I would, so I would move that we deny this.
Also violates the court order.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to deny item 20. Cast your votes, and it is denied.
Item 21 is the revised preliminary plat of Saddle Creek Estates.
Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, 1-819 South Morgan Road, can't speak. We, on behalf of the client, we agreed to all TEs except for number two. I would like to modify. It says Section 5.8.2, that's to say 5.2.8B1. I have discussed this with staff, and they have no objections.
And that would change what, Mark?
The, it's, they're requesting a divided median. There's two options on the divided median. One requires on a T that they widen the road that it tees into, and the alternate that we are requesting just provides for the divided median without requiring the widening of the, through the crossing street. We don't have the distance on the elbow to do that, and it's a short entry into the site. So, we just would like to divide it 20 foot on each side, have the 10-foot median as required in that section of the sub-rig.
JJ, that's agreed?
Yeah, we're fine with that. The initial reference was to the entire section of the sub-rigs with all the options, that just the divided entry would meet the subdivision regulations in this case.
Okay, but with this modification, and it meets the access requirements without another emergency access, we do away with all that discussion of the emergency access to the west through the many stores and all that.
Right, the divided entry does away with that.
Thank you.
Now, Mark, the section was 528?
52A B1.
B1, okay. No one signed up, commissioners? Motion, second to approve item 21, modifying TE 2. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 22 is C 6255, which is a final plat of TFCU addition in Ward 3.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, Todd DiAmico, First American Professional Land Services, 1700 South Broadway, Moore, Oklahoma. Here today on behalf of Tinkler Federal Credit Union, and with me today is Mr. Peterson, VP of Special Services from Tinkler Federal Credit Union. We have one item we would like to discuss with the commission today in regards to staff's comments. We're in agreement with all comments, with the exception of the traffic management section along 134th Street, restricts access 200 feet, 200 feet from the intersection of the on-ramp and Southwest 134th Street. To give you just a little bit of background on this plat, our portion of the property that Tinkler Federal would like to purchase is included in a PUD and straight I-2 zoning. So, part of the reason we're here today is a section of the property is required to plat that through the PUD. We have not prepared any engineering drawings or submitted any other drawings to staff to go forward with the development of the property. It's our intent to plat the property and transfer it from the current owner to Tinkler Federal Credit Union. So, as we go through the items in staff's report, we're in agreement with these things because we want to address these in the engineering phase. But item six is in conflict, and I apologize that with that said, that you don't have a copy of our proposed site plan because we're not to that stage in submittal yet. I do have a copy if you'd like to see it today, but Tinkler is requesting two curb cuts along 134th Street. Currently, right now, they're 110 feet, as I measure, from the intersection of that ramp to their first drive entrance, with a separation at this time of 200 feet between both entrances along 134th. So, we would like the commission to approve the plat with the exception of item number six, TE number six.
So, let me understand, you're talking about having two curb cuts off of 134th Street. On your site, they're separated by 200 feet.
Yes, sir.
But the westernmost curb cut is less than 200 feet from the exit ramp of the interstate?
Yes, sir. It's 110 feet from the intersection of the ramp to the center line of the proposed drive.
I can't consider doing anything like that, I mean, for pure safety reasons, coming up off a ramp and then having to make a quick right-hand turn into your site. I mean, we have the separation for safety reasons, and I think that would create a hazard. I mean, you'll have to figure out how you design your site and comply with that. I mean, ODOT may or may not even pay attention to this when you submit it to them.
Well, that was, the basis of our request was that 134th Street is a state highway. Not only are we bounded by I-44 on the, on the east, but 134th Street is also a highway, and we'll have to have driveway permits approved by DOT in order for those two. And they may actually deny that and, like you said, for safety reasons, force us to one curb cut further down.
Nick?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the sensitivity. If I'm coming off the off-ramp off of 44, I get down to 134th, there's going to be some type of traffic control at that intersection. And even if there's not, I have to slow to execute a right turn to get onto 134th, to get to his driveway, whether it's 50 feet, 100 feet, or 300 feet. So, what does the, what does the proximity of the ramp have to do with? It should, to me, it should be more the proximity of that ramp intersection. It's not that you're going fast down the ramp because you're going to have to negotiate a right turn to get to his driveway anyway. Shouldn't the question be, what's the appropriate distance from the intersection to the driveway? And take the reference to the ramp out, or am I missing something?
So, what's the intersection? What's the intersection, then?
He just said it was 110 feet.
No, I understand, and I'm, I'm not saying that's...
From the intersection to their first drive.
And I'm not saying that's appropriate or inappropriate. I'm reading the TE, and it talks about the exit ramp of, you know, 200 feet from the exit ramp, and Chairman's making the comment that I'm, I come flying down the exit ramp. Well, but I'm, I do, but I have to stop or slow to execute my turn to get to their driveway anyway, so I would think it would, the question would be, and maybe we may, may be saying the same thing, but the question would be, what's an appropriate distance from the intersection to the first curb cut? And that may be 200 feet as opposed to 110. I'm not saying it's not, but I, I don't understand the wording of the PE, I guess.
Well, here's, here's what I suggest, perhaps. I'd like to see the TE stay in there because we're going to see this again. Isn't that right?
Yes, sir.
You'll see this again in the development.
A specific plan...
A specific plan that's going to show where the curb cuts are, et cetera. And what I'd like for you to do with that specific plan is see if you can conform with TE number six. The next time we look at it, we can do the measurements, et cetera, and look at it then, and maybe we'll agree, like Nick's saying, there's no problem there. But I'd like to see it in-
Sir, I believe that this is a final plat due to the PUD, so this will be the only time you see it. And JJ, is that correct?
Oh, this is the final plat.
I apologize. That's why I led with, the purpose of our minor subdivision was to basically take two deeds that currently don't form this property in the format that Tinker needs it to develop it and create it into one lot so that they can transfer the property. So, we've gone through some other engineering requirements and discussions, not only with staff, also with traffic management. I've had two conversations in the past two days. So, we've discussed items about how to engineer this correctly to standards. But our intent today is to request plat approval, even if it has to be with all of these TE's, and to work these issues out. Like you said, the council may not see it again, but definitely engineering and the Public Works Department will see all of these things. And these items will be fully addressed during the design stage. Is that a false statement?
Go ahead, Dennis.
And so, based on that comment, I would move for approval with the TE's as they are.
Second.
Second.
Good. I think that's, I think that'll- We have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-two. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five have been continued until January the 27th.
Come on, Brian.
Item twenty-six is S.P. 426, application by Plumbers and Pipefitters Apprenticeship School.
Mr. Chairman, Members, Chris Bryan, Coon Engineering, Representative applicant. This is a, it's an old elementary school that has been used by the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union since, for about, since eighty-one, so what's that, twenty-nine years? And what they do is they train apprentices in learning how to do piping and all that. No U students come up and use it. It's a really neat facility. If you've never seen it, we're wanting to build a pavilion outside where they can start practicing more building. So, two TE's, we agree with both. Request your approval.
I'm going to move.
Yes.
And I can envision many different things appearance-wise for a pavilion.
Okay.
I can envision many uses. Say, we're going to use the pavilion for, for training. What are we going to do, and what's it going to look like?
It's going to be a concrete pad with a roof. It'll have some storage on it for tools. What these apprentices do is they come and they learn how to build a wall, learn how to put piping in the wall, maybe during the semester. When the semester's over, it's dismantled, and the next semester comes in and does the same thing again. And that way, they can build walls of any shape, size, whatever. But any type of machinery in the staff work, any type of machinery or tools has to be enclosed. It's just a training facility for it.
So, basically, what we're doing, this is outdoor training with a roof?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. No one has signed up?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-six. Cast your votes. Aren't you glad you spent the afternoon with us?
Yes. Got a lot of reading, then.
Okay, that concludes the items for public consideration. We have to adopt the 2011 Commission meeting schedule, which I think we probably each received as an email. A bit of adoption of the schedule. A motion, second to adopt the schedule for 2011. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Planning Commission committees?
Just briefly, I spoke further to our earlier discussion regarding sidewalk location vis-a-vis street trees and planning close. We had a, JJ and I met with representatives of the Water Department today to discuss location of water line and kind of give them an overview of our concerns and history. Provided, they provided me some nifty little diagrams, and I provided, they have our list of street trees. We began the discussions with respect to that, and they like to take back our concerns and review those. And we're going to try to schedule another meeting with the Water Department for first or second meeting in January. So, receptive to our comments with respect of history. As we suspected, their concerns are maintenance, much like we heard. Nathan was at the meeting today, and it was similar to the concerns that they have with respect to their large water mains. And so, we're going to have some discussions about giving them their requests for what, I think it was one more foot there that they've asked with respect to the subdivision regs, and some of our concerns about being able to, aesthetically, they love the canopy idea as water maintenance people. They are lesson to, shall we say. So, I'll report after the next meeting, which is set, I believe, for either the 13th to the 27th. I can't remember which one we, I think it was the 27th meeting in January, but I'll let you know.
Mike, it's good you're having that meeting with them, because in these committees, I think it's enriched, you know, we've talked about increased landscape. This is for the OKC plan process that's going on. And we've talked about street trees and landscaping, et cetera. And so, what we don't want to have is the Water Department or Public Works pushing back on what the citizens would really like to see, and that's street trees and that sort of thing. So, this is good. Planning Commission members? I have a comment on the application number twenty that we just denied. I assume that zoning enforcement is going to be knocking on the fellow's door. I assume that that's, I just want them to know what we did today and put that property in conformance with what it's supposed to be doing. Okay? Planning Department?
Two things. I want to say thanks for everybody who's participated in Plan OKC so far.
There's another meeting at four o'clock for those of you who don't have anything else to do.
This would be the most important thing to do. And there is a joint session between the Planning Commission and the City Council scheduled for February the 15th.
Oh.
Topics as yet undecided.
Okay, so mark your calendars, February 15th, for a joint workshop with the City Council.
Tuesday.
Is this going to be less formal, more convenient, or is there going to be any interaction between the Planning Commission and City Council?
I hope so. I had a lengthy conversation with the mayor about that and format, and how the last one went, and how we would like to have this one be much more interactive and informal.
In that regard, Chairman, it would be nice to have some understanding of agenda item, what will and will not be discussed.
I had that discussion with the mayor as well. Also wanted to have, for any agenda items that we might advance that are included, that there be a staff workup on those as well. If you recall, the last time, the only agenda item we had was appearance corridors. And, but the end of the meeting, couch looked at me and said, okay, now, Yoko, you want to talk about appearance corridors? Go ahead. Well, it turned out to be the only thing anybody ever cared about that day, as a matter of fact. And we wound up getting something done about appearance corridors, but it didn't come off the way I thought it was going to when we were planning it. The topic that I suggested to the mayor that we've spent some time on is Plan OKC and the process, and to have us be on the same page in a general way in terms of where that is headed, and then other things like traffic studies and so forth, which we will be suggesting or proposing to them for consideration. For example, that we take the traffic studies and do them at the zoning stage where appropriate, as opposed to at the planning stage when the zoning is already in place. Any topics that you think we ought to take up with the council in that meeting? If you chair them with Russell, I guess we'll talk about that and see.
I am meeting with the city manager tomorrow to talk about possible topics. And just in line with the previous statement, we will be doing issue papers on whatever those topics are. So, there is information that you need to begin the dialogue. I don't think anything will be a surprise.
Development Services, JJ, municipal counselor. Well, in that case, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and see you in the new year, et cetera, et cetera.
Please, second.
And we're adjourned.